All right, my name's Steve Fodge, town engineer. With me tonight is Peter Hill, Chair of the Traffic and Sidewalk Committee, and Tim McIntosh from the HBD who's doing the engineering for tonight's project that we want to talk about, which is the Brown Street and Winter Street sidewalk. So, I know we had a sidewalk on a lovely Saturday, rainy Saturday, most of you made it. We only made it as far as, really for the walk, we only made it as far as Winter and Brown.
I'm sorry, but it's blocking.
So that's, we were thinking that would be the focus of today, since we haven't had an opportunity to do the sidewalk for the other two portions. But we are prepared to talk about the entire project if it pleases the board. We know we'll have to come back because there's still some unanswered issues with respect to the property on the corner at Brown and Winter, so. Without further ado, I'll just show you. We can get this to work. So the first video is Brown Street up by the, up here Route 30 at the Church of the Latter Day Saints and then heading eastbound towards Wellesley Street. So there's three videos. The first one from Brown from the church to Winter. The second one from Winter Gardens across from West Gate Church on Winter Street, and north up to Brown. And the third one will be the area we focused on from Winter to Wellesley. Worked a while ago.
It's gone, it's gone.
It was gone.
It doesn't want us to know.
Maybe it's time for me to put in for a new computer.
He says not responding.
Yeah. There it is. Not responding. Just slow. You try to hit the arrow now, maybe? It's not starting at the beginning. It's still compiling. Oh, yeah. I apologize.
That's right.
This worked beautifully in our office.
How big is this file?
It's, uh...
Yeah, it's gotta be.
We were driving at about fifteen miles an hour though, so it only took about less than two minutes to do each piece, right?
It was really quick.
Can we show some stuff in the PowerPoint?
Well, I have the PowerPoint. I could go over some things on these boards, sort of as prep, a little out of order.
Well, I work out this glitch here.
Why don't we do that? I can see that, but... So this, again, I would have introduced this a little later in the presentation, but one of the things that we're looking at as far as the sidewalk is the kind of treatment, the typical section of the sidewalk. I think there are three. We have the case where the sidewalk is going to be immediately adjacent to the roadway. And so what you'll see here is this would represent the existing roadway. We would have asphalt, curb, five to six inch reveal. And then the sidewalk would be adjacent to that. And then we would have some loman seed to tie back into existing.
Talking about a straight curb?
Yeah.
Did I talk about a kate cloud burr or anything like that?
And the sidewalk material is also asphalt? Sidewalk material would be asphalt. That's the proposal at this point. And again, the curb material is asphalt as well, and it would be more vertical. The second situation I think we have is a situation where the sidewalk is offset from the roadway by some distance, typically three or four feet. We would have either an existing edge treatment, sometimes that's a burr which is flatter, but it's also asphalt, or curb, asphalt curb. Or we could be proposing to replace it for whatever reason, whether it's deteriorating. The sidewalk width in this case would be a little bit narrower, five and a half feet, because we don't have to allow for that width for the curb. And again, we would propose to tie in the existing ground behind it, a loman seed or a mulch or some material like that. I think the third situation we have, obviously there are stone walls out there. What this one represents is a situation where we would propose the sidewalk to be behind a stone wall for a number of different reasons. In one case, we have a stone wall, we have the existing edge of road, and we have a utility pole right smack in the middle. There's really no room to put a sidewalk there without removing and resetting the pole.
Where's the right of way, edge of the right of way?
I'm sure we should...
Sorry.
There we go.
We can, no, keep going.
Okay. To answer the question, the right of way is variable. In the situation I described, the right of way was right at the back of, face of the wall.
So you're on private property.
In that particular case, you would have the need to get a sidewalk easement or a permanent easement. But that's not always the case. There are some cases where we have a wall and the right of way line is quite wide ways back. Those are the three situations. We can refer to this again after the video.
So this is the church up near Route 30. The sidewalk would begin, basically, there's the first stake right there.
The sidewalk starts at Route 30, right?
Sidewalk would start right here by the driveway.
Oh, it starts at the driveway.
Yeah. There's that first stake. And there's enough right of way here, so there's no easements required. Another stake right there. This would be a case, as Tim pointed out, where it's right against the street, so the...
This would be one with no vegetation between the...
Correct, yeah, that's right.
So the kate cloud burr would go away and be replaced with an upright burr.
This is the White...
Version one.
This is the Whitman Tennis Center driveway, so there'd be a crosswalk here. There's enough room between the pole and...
Yeah, what happens at the telephone block?
There's a stake here, and there's a stake here. I think what we planned is...
Are you behind the pole?
Behind the pole.
That's right, that's right.
You know, what happens to the hydrant? You sort of...
I think we can...
Wiggle through.
I think we wiggle through.
The intent would be to try to retain the utility poles and retain the hydrant. The plan view will show some of that too, a little bit more detail.
There's another stake there.
She's gonna move the signpost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gonna kill all that maple and bays and stuff.
I think there's this...
Behind the pole, between the wall and the pole.
Yeah, okay.
Now, where's the sidewalk? Between the current curb and the utility pole?
I think in this case, it would be behind the pole.
Behind the pole, okay.
Never seen that before. That would be an easement there, right?
I don't think so.
That's tennis property.
That's the tennis property.
There are two properties that require easements right now, and that's one of the locations.
What happens to the mailboxes?
They would just be removed and have to be relocated into some other suitable location. So here we are at Winter Street.
Yeah.
So that's... If we go to the Winter Street piece, I'll go ahead and get that to play. So there's, okay, there's a... Oh, this is, Tim went fast on this one, so. Sorry. See if I can pause it to...
Is this on Winter Street now?
It's on Winter Street, yeah. Their septic system is sort of right in there, so we were planning to be back a bit away from the road. We'll have to walk this one, so this is just sort of a preview, I guess.
This is where we were talking about which side of the street you should be on.
No, not at this part.
No, we haven't hit that portion yet.
We didn't walk this part yet.
No, we didn't walk this part. This is at Winter Gardens.
This is on the other side of Route 20, the pipe.
This is on the other side.
Looked too successful. I think what I'll do is skip that one, since we are having so much trouble with this. And just try to get to the piece where we're really... So here we are. There's Winter Street going off that way. There's a stake there, so we'll be behind the wall. The right of way is quite wide here. We'd be in...
So what happens to all those stones? You just...
We can be, we can be behind that. We could try to do some work to straighten out that if we wanted to. The idea being, we wanted to stay away from there, so we'd be on the yard side of that area.
The grass side?
The grass, yeah.
Just giving me agita. Are those files on your computer or on the network?
Yeah, no, they're on my computer.
So you're still behind the stone wall?
Still behind the wall, yeah. There's a stake in there. Marked some trees that...
This is the area we walked, right?
We walked, yes.
Right, I remember that burr.
Trying to get, not to bother these trees. There's a stake there, so...
So you jump back to the street here?
Jump back to the street area, yeah.
Taking note of trees.
Right, but a lot of them were really...
Pretty bad?
Yeah, and they were also talking about, there's a lot of stone, it's a rubble wall. It's fallen by, they were just pushing back. Somewhere they fall.
Yeah.
No, Tim, you better use your computer.
This is the location, yeah, this is the questionable thing, right?
I'm trying.
What's the challenge?
The wall is about twelve feet on ten property.
Yeah.
And there's two maples that the sidewalk would basically have a lot of.
Yeah.
Okay, so here's, here's the challenge. We have, we have this stone wall, and the folks who live here are present tonight. The proposed alignment we were trying to do is to thread the needle between the wall and these two trees. It's only about, I think we measured about five, five and a half feet from the base of the tree to the wall, but there's roots right at the surface. So DPW has some concerns about the ability of those trees to survive if we have a patina sidewalk going over the roofs.
Shape up above half, half the roots as well.
Yeah, so...
The concern is, is what?
Well, the concern is the survival of these trees.
No, no, but what would this, would the asphalt sidewalk threaten the roots because of the weight of the asphalt, or because the tree wouldn't be getting water? Or what would be the...
I think the idea is...
The excavation?
Right, you would excavate.
You'd cut the roots to excavate?
Excavate down probably close to twelve inches to get a good material, and then a little less than three inches of asphalt.
How about the porous, porous, they were talking about porous asphalt, is that a possibility?
It's still into bed.
Yeah.
Yeah, most of the roots that are absorbing water are farther out. I mean, these are like the main leaders, kind of the root. So what have you built up from there and didn't disturb the roots?
That's one thing I think we're looking into. I think the one issue with that is the higher you get your sidewalk over the roots, the less the reveal of the wall is on the street side. And that may or may not be an issue. But certainly, the higher you can get over those roots, the less impact you would have on the roots, less cutting.
Well, except that you can suffocate. That's, that's the other thing. That's why, that's why tree wells never really work really well, because they put them in too close to the truck.
The other option that we can look at at these, you know, isolated locations is to narrow the sidewalk down to four feet, to try to stay as far away from them.
But this wouldn't work because of the roots right there. The real issue is the stone wall, which is...
We were talking about moving the center portion of the wall curving, so that it would basically, you know, if these are the trees and this is the road, the wall would come in and go back out. And that way, you could take the sidewalk away from the trees.
I sort of wish that Ken was here to talk to this.
What was he?
He's just right there.
Oh, you are there? Ken, talk to us about how do we make this work? I can see it, sorry.
Do you want me to give a solution for this? I'm not really sure.
I think he's just looking for an opinion. Well, the other, the other things that we talked about was maybe if these trees are not healthy, I don't know if they are or not, but if they aren't, you know, maybe the sidewalk can be, can remain out here and something new could go between the sidewalk and the wall in the way of shade trees.
Have you seen those trees?
They're not terrible, are they? They're red maples. They're not, they're not the most robust specimens I've ever seen. They've, they've taken their fair share of abuse on that street. But they're alive, and they're actually not doing that badly. And it would take years and years to replace them.
Okay, so that's, this is, this needs to be somehow figured out.
Right.
So we can continue down around to, to the east. My computer will continue to work. So I'll use things to...
Never.
Here we go.
All right, so now, so now we're on the left side, also to the left of the stakes, right?
Stakes are the center line.
Stakes are the center line, yes. They're, they're a little bit off in some areas, because in this area, for example, the stake is set a little bit too far back.
Yeah.
I think as we get into this upcoming slope, it would be adjacent to the edge of roadway.
What happens here? There's gonna be some excavation? Because that topography just started to do that.
It's gonna go up the slope.
What's gonna go up the slope?
It goes up at the end.
It goes up, you know, as you're coming in to Wellesley Street.
Goes up the hill.
Right opposite the green church.
So where does it take off?
We'll show you. Just about.
There.
At that tree?
We probably could show it easier on the plans that you have, so.
You know, if we want to focus on this area now, we can use the boards, I think.
Okay.
And that might be easier, especially if we're concerned about...
I'll see if I can bring your PowerPoint up there.
Yeah.
Still done with this video.
So I don't know if everybody can see that, okay? So, so this is the area on Brown Street close to Wellesley. Okay, this is, this represents the new intersection improvements. The orange shaded area represents the sidewalk area. And if you remember from the video, right about here is where we started to peel off. When you were doing your site visit, you noticed the stakes through the area. Steve and I had staked those out, and we tried to follow the train and avoid the major trees as best we could. It's really from this point here down that we start to run into, you know, some excavation area to kind of get from the elevation up at this hill down. This represents the profile of the sidewalk, starting about here and ending here. And we're fixed with elevations at the intersection here. And we're, we're fixed with elevations here. So we really, you know, have to come up and then meet the existing terrain. We're constrained by a maximum slope of five percent to come up to meet the handicap accessibility. We can go steeper, as much as eight percent, if we would need a railing. And so we weren't considering that as an option just yet. I'm not sure if it would be considered at all, frankly. But really, in this area here, you can see, that represents the existing topography. And you can see we're quite a bit lower in that area, just to make the grade. This green shaded area represents the amount of slope that would be required. I'm gonna flip to the next sheet, which, which shows some cross-sections cut at some key areas along here, and that will give you a sense of the impact. And we can come back to the sheet of PP. But this and these two sections here, I know it's a little hard to see, are sort of cross-sections of the sidewalk here and here, the areas of the steepest. And as you can see, there's our sidewalk fairly close to the roadway. But to kind of come up to meet the existing grade at a two to one slope, which is typically the slope that we would use for stable ground. We could go to something steeper, but typically that requires some kind of a stone treatment or a slope stabilization treatment. We're showing two to one just to show you the impacts. The red line here would show a slightly less steep, a slightly steeper slope of the one I have to one. But the point is, we still have significant impact there. You know, this graphic here would represent minimization of that impact if you were to consider a wall along this edge. You could minimize that as well, of course, there's added cost with that as well.
What's the differential? How much more, what's the percentage increase for the wall over the slope, roughly?
It probably, it probably cuts it about in half. I mean, the, the better way to look at it is, you know, my slope limit is, is over here, and I'm probably shaving off five, six feet of cut into the hill. So it would save those trees behind that wall. Again, not all of them, it would minimize it, but it's still, it's still disruptive. We did look at two other variations of this, very slight variations. Essentially, this area and here stayed about the same. And I can flip to the other sheets. The second variation held this point, but, but kind of went out a little bit flatter here with the thought that that might minimize the cut. The third variation, there was a tree right here, so we, instead of going to the left of the tree, we went to the right of the tree to see if that would work. And I'll show you those very briefly. I think what you'll find is it's a similar impact. Looks very similar. This actually is a little flatter, a little longer. You can see by the green area that that, that one kind of is actually a little bit more. That represents the existing ground. So we still, we have more impact here. And the sections show that as well. Again, these are the sections down below. It's just a longer cut to kind of get back up to grade. And this represents a similar wall tree that has an option to consider. And then the third location, or the third alternative, had a slightly, you know, very similar alignment up in here. And instead of going to the left of the tree, we went to the right of the tree and tried to come down at a similar angle. Again, a little bit less cut than the previous option, but still, you can see the amount of cut there. Quite a bit of impact in this particular area on all three locations. And the sections, again, in those key locations, show that out, bear that out. I didn't point this out on the previous one, but up in the top piece, we're pretty close to the existing terrain, so that works pretty well.
Was this an artificial burr created with a turnpike still?
It's, it's hard to tell. I don't think so. Clearly, there's a pretty big slope up to the turnpike here. The slope in this area kind of comes up and then flattens out. So I'm not quite sure whether that was created when they put the turnpike in or not.
I actually didn't get up and get a good look at the vegetation up there. I didn't, I mean, I wasn't sure of this old growth. I mean, it looks like it was, what, forty, fifty, sixty years old and stuff, which would be about the turnpike.
That seems right, that's true.
So the turnpike's elevated, then this may have been just a remainder.
Yeah, it looked like remains on us. It was like some of the dump.
Nothing fancy.
Yeah, right.
The last option that we did look at, and it was something that we looked at initially, and then we kind of went a different direction and tried to get the sidewalk overland, is the option where the sidewalk just hugs the roadway right to the intersection. And there is impact with that, you know, at this location, the sketch basin, and at this location closer to the intersection. And you might see from the photos, there's at least one large tree right in this area that would be impacted with this slope treatment. And I didn't need a second sheet, because I didn't create a profile for this, because it essentially follows the roadway.
The traffic committee does not prefer this one, so.
Correct. Which is, which is why we went the direction we had, so we're looking at the impacts.
What? Why not, Peter?
We just thought it's, it's much more like rural to go into the woods, and it's a much more natural, you know, to keep the feel of town, which is, like, what's all on Church Street, for instance, which I think is pretty just bland. Makes it much more of a natural recreational path.
And I think all, you know, obviously, all four options can work. It depends on, you know, what the, what the priorities are. You know, if the priorities are trying to limit the amount of tree impact cutting versus, you know, maybe more of a straightforward, less rural option. You know, I think that's what we have to weigh and figure out what is the best option.
I mean, that area is not exactly a beautiful location. It's best right next to the height of the vehicle. I think anything we do going up that hill would actually make a good place.
So which option does have the least amount of impact on trees and cut and fill? It's this option that hugs the road. Again, there's, there's one significant tree right in here that was, that would be impacted. The slope there is steeper, and just, just by the fact of putting up a five-foot sidewalk here, you would be undermining those roots, so that tree would really need to go. We do have a couple of photos that sort of show that area, but...
And that would be right on the road. The only thing I think about that is there are gonna be traffic signals in there. As it is now, huge volume goes through there.
Yes.
And to be really, really close to all those cars.
I believe the traffic committee thinks it's much safer, much better looking to walk that road. The land is not exactly the most good land right there.
So those are the four options we're looking at in this particular area, and...
Is there a light from any of this?
There's no what?
Lighting?
No.
So if you're walking after dark, you're away from the streetlights on the hill, on the hill side of the sidewalk?
Yeah, for the first few hundred feet, and then you're, then you're basically along the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Essentially, whatever lights on the street's gonna impact, will, will impact that, you know, that area anyhow.
Yeah.
And you, you would have some vegetation and buffer that would remain in this, this area closer to the, closer to the intersection, so...
We're just thinking about people walking after dark.
Sure.
They would hit the lights.
Well, people walk, well, people walk after dark on Wellesley, you know, they walk after dark on Wellesley Street. It's no different than a lot of the other streets where the paths, people walk after dark.
And I think, you know, one of the other concerns we sort of had was, you know, if this were, let's say, the preferred alternative, you know, would there be some folks that decide to just walk along the edge of the road?
I don't really think people would do, I don't think many people would do that.
I mean, I wouldn't, because it's a narrow...
I think people will stay on the path.
But it's just on the point.
People go, people don't go off the path.
Any other question?
Yeah, I just want, I, I feel, I, you know, children, this is where the children are walking, and I have a child to watch on this, and I feel very strongly that it'd be close to the road.
Be close to the road?
Yeah, because they're walking at night. I don't want them off in the woods and the loud highway and...
This is not very far, you're not talking about a huge distance. I mean, if you go look at the path that's on South Ave, right by the school, it's way off the road.
Right.
This is actually, you're not talking like a huge distance off the road.
I mean, so it's enough off...
The length, there's...
It's, it's very, it's still very visible from the road. Where's the one on South Ave?
Yeah.
You can't even see that path from the road.
But it's visible, this is visible from the road.
This would be visible from the road.
Okay, well, it's visible, that's, I just don't want it off in the woods or the highway.
Actually, this is, I mean, it'd be totally visible from the road.
Oh, did you have a comment?
It's exactly what this lady said. I had exactly the same comment.
Did you skip your name from the record?
I'm Dimitri Georgikopoulos. I live on sixty-six Brown Street. And we know the area very well. We walk that area all the time. I understand what everybody's saying here, but I am afraid that a lot, if not most, of the kids that walk there would not go up here. They would actually veer off the sidewalk right at that point because you can see the streets right next, right there. And they would end up walking in the middle of the street as they are now. So I'm a little skeptical with all due respect because the slope is too high and you go too far back. And it's not very enticing for everyone to do this, maybe strip.
I would agree to disagree. I mean, I live on Wellsley Street, and there are many sections on Wellsley Street where the path goes uphill to the side. I have never, ever seen anybody walk up those paths. And I do not believe that kids will go off the path onto the road. Totally disagree with that.
I have to say differences in the case of Brown. I mean, you can see where the sidewalk ends. In Wellsley, it just keeps going and going and going. Plus, Wellsley is a much busier street, so I'm not convinced that that's a very good analogy. I haven't thought about it, but I think people are aware of it.
I've never, I've never, ever seen people where there is a footpath, whether it be on Wellsley Street, whether it be on South Ave, whether it be on Ash Street, that people walk the path onto the roadway.
It happens all the time.
I haven't seen, I haven't, you can take a picture of people doing it.
Highland Street, that's constant.
What?
It happens on Highland Street all the time.
It happens on Highland because the foot, because the footpath ends.
No, no, on where the footpath is between, between the Lookout and Lovely, people are always on the street. They're, you have to be very careful because they're on the street.
I've only seen, I've only seen it where the footpath ends and then they stop walking in the street. But when the path is there, I see people staying on the path. I mean, if you can show me pictures of people not being on the path, I've never noticed that.
Peter, what are you looking for from the lighting board? Just our comments or just a chance to show us what you have in mind? Is that, is that where we are right now?
Yeah, since we've, since we've still got some unanswered questions as it relates to some of the other components, particularly at the corner of Brown and Winter, we haven't quite worked that out. We don't expect any real actions tonight. But we go through, make some progress at least in identifying the issues in that, in this stretch that we're talking about.
Right.
See what your preferences might be as far as alignment goes, the pros and cons, you know, trees versus, versus not, et cetera. And then, of course, at sixty-six Brown, that's a significant thing we need to do.
Right. Yeah, the Brown Street hurdle is not one that we're going to be able to comment on because it's really, that's really an issue of geometry, you know? What happens with that wall and it's, you know, that resolution? There's, you know, there's, there's some factors there that we don't have any...
We're not trying to throw in the last, but we want to make sure we get as many people to weigh in.
Yeah, I mean...
I think it would help if Kim weighed in on those trees and what she thought.
What can she say? I mean...
No, not, not right now. But go look at them and is, are those trees worth saving? Or would it make more sense to put the sidewalk there and to plant two new healthy trees farther away from the road?
Or what else could be done?
There's nothing that can be done. I mean, the minute you excavate those roots, they're going to die. So you either save the tree or you don't.
But you can't go above them?
How? There's stuff, yeah, if you cover the crown of the tree, it'll die.
Move the sidewalk back away from the trees, or take, take the trees down and plant new trees.
Right.
Those are the two, those are the two choices. I, I don't, you know, I don't know that Kim's going to base, going to say that's the better choice. I mean...
It would help to see the trees in person.
But even then, you know, they're red maples, so they are, if they are red maples, they are street, you know, tolerant, they are urban tolerant trees. But, you know, who's to say that if you reverted it around now that thing's not going to die in three years? And we say, why do we go through all this trouble? I can't, I can't. Can't predict, can't predict.
You like the trees or not, that's, that's really the issue. If you like them, you want to do everything you can to save them. But that gets you into the, into the dialogue about what happens to the stone wall. And that's where, you know, we're, we're way out of our, our mandate. I like old mature trees, older mature trees. If there's any way to save them, I'd prefer to do that. But if there's, if it's just not going to work, we'll have to do something else.
Should we proceed with some of the additional?
Yeah, we can, I mean, the PowerPoint goes through the entire quarter. You've seen some of it through the existing video.
This part about close to Wellsley Street that goes up into the, you know, up the berm a bit and stuff. Have you run this, the option, the two options by the police department? And what they think about in terms of safety?
We haven't really, I mean, they haven't, I can ask them if they have...
Might be good to get their perspective on it.
I mean, there's, there's never been a problem on, on South Ave. I'll be more than glad to ask.
Yeah, but would be good to get their perspective on it.
I'll be more than glad to get that, too. I'll send you that.
As far as, to my opinion of that problem area is concerned, near Wellsley Street, I've got to go out and take a look at it myself. I wasn't able to be at the sidewalk, unfortunately, but, I don't know. Any solution is going to require some disruption of the existing viewscape. So the question is, which, which disruption is the least disruption? It looks, I mean, frankly, Peter, it looks like the least disruption is just to keep the sidewalk right on the road.
I actually think, you know, personally, I mean, if...
Maybe that's not the case. It just looks like it from the diagrams.
We felt this is the safest alternative, the best alternative, a much more rural alternative. And, you know, there are a lot of cars there, and they're coming and going and turning. And I hate to have a kid get turned into also. It just takes them away from that corner. It's just, I think it's better looking and I think it's safer for the kids.
Well, you can break, you can just come along the sidewalk and be moving around to the same, same place.
The crosswalk area?
Or the crosswalkings.
Yeah, the crosswalk area. I mean, the trouble is getting these kids to be compliant. I mean, I'm all, I'm all for going up the little trail because I think it'd be so sweet, but what I can't, my kids don't...
I don't see kids getting off, off the walk. I just don't do it.
I can, I can see them making shortcuts.
It's a cold...
It's not, I mean, you're not talking, it's not...
Pass least resistance, a walk right across the...
But the cross, but the crosswalk is going to connect where the end of this, when, at the end of the path. They're still going to go to that same spot.
One would hope.
What?
One would hope they were...
No, but they're going, that, the crossing is going to be where that path comes out, right?
That's right.
So where the path is coming out is where, where the path is coming out is where the crosswalk, it's going to be where the button's going to be. It's where everything is going to be located.
Yeah.
But here's what I'm worrying about. I mean, you're going up and then you're going down the slope. It's a, it's a...
It's not, you, actually, when you're not coming back, it's really, you're coming up and then you're pretty much leveled where, where it's not that much of a down.
Yeah, no, it does because you come, it does come here and then, you know...
It's a gentle down, it's not a huge...
The, the point is that the street is level. It's, it's a late fall day, it's been raining all day, and now you get a hard freeze. And you're going up and down that slope. And I'm thinking, if I'm, I'm putting myself in the position of somebody who's twelve years old, thirteen years old, I'm going to say, I think, you know, the street's level.
If it's a straight...
I don't, I don't want to, you know, fall on my keister.
I see kids, I see kids biking, walking on my street in front of me, and they're ups and downs. You can do what you want, this is what I, this is what I would recommend. So I don't, I can't, that would be my recommendation.
I totally appreciate your efforts in about the scenic road. I think that's wonderful, but realistically, they will take the path to its resistance.
I'll just agree to disagree.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you're just getting...
I'm not going to agree with you, it's just like...
That's okay.
This is, this is what I think would be the best. This would be what I think is the best alternative.
I guess the...
What I would prefer that way.
In the area that is closer to where you guys are, I mean, I think the trees are, are good and, you know, to be there. I like keeping those trees there. That would mean, you know, that, you know, shifting that wall so that it may not be a straight wall. It may be a...
This wasn't the area we were talking about, but just now, but that's okay.
Yeah, no, no, I know that, but I'm, I'm just moving on. I'm moving down the street, so to speak.
And that's exactly what we're talking about, the walkage. It's curving the middle of the wall, the legality, that's where they are.
And I think that that was the right conversation.
Once again, that's not...
Is there anything in the PowerPoint that would, that gives us more information than we've seen before?
No, I mean, we can, we can go through it fairly quickly. I don't, I don't think there's a lot more, but, and, so this was just overview. So, you know, this is the beginning of the project. If you keep hitting it, you know, you're going to see some of these photos that the existing, you know, that's what it looks like there, here. And then there's another view here. That's the tennis center. You know, again, the sidewalk is adjacent to the, to the, to the roadway.
And the tennis center is amenable to easement?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Again, now we're looking backwards, again, pretty straightforward. We do have a little bit of a buffer here because we have the room. We're going behind a pole, and now we're back to adjacent to the roadway here to avoid poles. You know, there's the hydrant that you saw in the earlier version. You know, we're saved, we're going behind that pole. No, it's okay. We're getting, approaching the, the Winter Street at the section here. And now we're adjacent again to the edge of road, bringing it up here. This, you know, this hedge area here is right in here, and that would need to be trimmed back. Probably saw that in the field as well. We've been trying to have a dialogue with the person that lives here, to no avail.
What do you mean?
You're just having a monologue?
They're not responding or...
Yes. And this is one of the... Trying to get her to come to meetings and return phone calls so we can at least talk about, because this is one of the places where we need an easement if we're going to do this plan. There's easements, there's an easement needed along this area here. But more importantly, there's an easement down in here, and there's a good picture a little further in the, in the, so if we can keep going. This is schools, so also, sorry, Brown Street is, you know, is here. And now this is heading towards Wellsley.
So it's heading towards the street, isn't it?
Okay. Winter Street heading back towards the pike. So this is the area, right here is right in here, where, where the sidewalk kind of essentially goes behind the wall for a hill of a good stretch. But there would be a new crosswalk here that would connect.
And isn't that where all the youths are sitting?
Yes, these are the, that's, that's rubbage right there. So we would hug the corner here, and then we'll talk about it in a few minutes to bring it on the other side of the wall.
We also talked about, I don't know, if you weren't at the sidewalk, we talked about coming, actually, just continuing along the east side and crossing, have two different crossing points. So having, we had made, to maybe minimize, we talked about having that crosswalk here and maybe having this other one down here. Have two crosswalks, and then maybe just moving a telephone pole.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah, because, because really, that's, that's one of the pinch points. There's a good photo of that a little later on the slide, so thank you, Peter. Again, proceeding to the east, you know, there's the wall that you saw in the existing video, and the sidewalk is behind it here, again, for some stretch.
Are you on like twelve feet of...
Yeah, the, the red line here is the right-of-way line. So you can see the edge of road is, is up, is really up, up in here. To the edge of pavement, I should say, of the road. The, the town layout line is quite a ways behind that. So, you know, there's the existing wall, sort of right along there. The idea was we would be more or less hugging that wall to minimize the vegetation impact. But there's just not enough room between the wall and the edge with the trees and the slope. We would really be disturbing it on that side. Again, heading easily, this is seventy-four. You know, we would be removing, this light pole would need to be moved back. The, I think the mailbox could stay because our sidewalk would be behind here. And then we get into number sixty-six, and, you know, we're, we're, we're behind the... The next, the next one is probably the best one. So this is the area that we've been talking about, the wall. You can see the distance that we do have between the trees, but what this photo doesn't really show is that the roots are right there. You folks have seen it on the sidewalk.
And a point where that is on the map?
That is right, there's, that's the first tree, is the wall. So what this plan is showing is the sidewalk going between the wall and the, and the large trees. You know, there, there is available right-of-way to go on the other side of the wall, but I don't think that's a preference for the homeowners. And, you know, it's one of the outstanding issues. There is a crosswalk proposed just to the east of the church parking lot, as a point to cross folks from this side to the church. And then, you know, we've kind of covered this area in some of these early ones. And one more photo, you can see, that, that larger tree area is right in there. That's, that's where, that's what you would be impacting if you were hugging the road. That's located, it's generally right in this area.
No, you said there was a photograph of Winter Street that you thought would be helpful?
Yes, yes. So now we're going to sort of switch gears, and now we're at Dixon Lane here. There's the condo, you know, our sidewalk would be starting here. This is a photo looking that way. The photo here is looking sort of up the hill. Our sidewalk is proposed on this side. Okay, and you can kind of see we're meandering it a little bit to maximize. That septic system, I believe, is somewhere in here, so it has come back down around. And the bridge here over the pike has an existing sidewalk, so we would be tying into that, which is just there, and you can see there, there it is there. But we would be hugging the road here, and then as we continue, I guess, towards Brown. It's pretty tight between the edge of the road and the guardrail, but there is just five feet, so... Yep, that's right. I think we could retain that guardrail and bring it down. Even though we've called for it to be removed and reset, I think, based on the field walk and the, and the photos, I think it can be retained. So continuing down, again, you can see we've got room here. There's a, there's a gate area right in this, let's see, I think it's right in this area here. This is generally where we would go from edge of road to propose to be behind the wall. You can just see the wall there. Okay, so this would be a nice area to kind of get behind that wall. And then, essentially, from this point, this is the tennis property here. And the wall would, we would require an easement from them to get behind the wall. But then it would continue onto the, I guess it's the Garren property here towards... And this is, you know, we're back to the intersection of Brown and Winter. And the next photo, I think, is the, is the photo I was talking about. So that, that's the pinch point. There's your wall, there's your utility pole, that's right here. So that wall is right there, the pole is right there. There's really no room to put anything there without moving the pole. And it's actually more than one pole that would be impacted, right? That's right, that's right. That's where we were talking, there's enough right-of-way on the other side of the road. But we've got that in the end, we've got a little bit of a stone wall there, so if maybe that could be, if that could be set back at the right-of-way perhaps. We know we don't have a friend there, though, so that's another factor, but... And then I think the next photo is, is sort of a shot looking, yeah, so there's the wall. Now you're looking from right here that way, and you can see that's the wall. So we're looking, this photo's looking back towards the pike. There's the wall, there's the, there's the pole, and our sidewalk, at least in this plan, is proposed just behind.
So that crosswalk, that westerly end of it, being so far off the corner...
You mean down in here?
No, that one, that one, the westerly end of that. People driving east on Brown Street making a right turn onto Winter Street, they're not going to be able to see anybody.
Well, it's, it's a concern mainly because of the, the hedge that's there, you know? This is a stop condition?
Yeah, but still, I mean, if someone's stepping off the curb, they're not going to see that person. And they're, and they'll be right in the post of the windshield.
It's at the stop line on the, on the other side. This is why we kind of, no, if you're, if you're coming north on Winter Street, the crosswalk would be right where the stop bar is, right, right there. So it makes sense on that side, but...
Yeah, but the other side would be a danger.
Yeah. I mean, this crosswalk, you know, is, can be reconfigured. I mean, it could be, this could be brought out closer this way to go, you know, closer to maybe improve that. It means the crosswalk's a little longer. We are, we are suggesting a curb, you know, adjustment on this corner. It's pretty flat.
Why would it have to be perpendicular to the sidewalk on... Why would it have to be perpendicular to the sidewalk on, on going down Winter Street? Why couldn't it just follow the angle across?
It could, it's just, it's just longer, but that's not a big deal.
Yeah, there's definitely some wiggle room there too.
Yeah, because that, that would, that would not be a safe situation.
But, but one of the problems is the right of way width of Winter Street. You just don't have any, it's such a narrow street.
That's the, that's the right of way line on that side. It does widen out as you get here, but in this stretch, it really is at the wall. And you've got a little bit more room on this side, but not a lot more.
Right, but again, if, if that crosswalk is moved up so it's straight and you bring your, your, your sidewalk around the corner on the east side of Winter Street and then cross after you get past the pinch points.
Yep. Oh, yeah, this way.
Rapping it down.
Yeah, and then cross after you get the pinch point. Won't that solve that problem?
Well, I think it would, I mean, it means you, you don't have to build this piece of sidewalk.
Correct.
The, the only issue is that if you cross them there, you do, you still have a wall here, so you really, what you're talking about is bringing the, bringing, making that crosswalk somewhere around.
You still need two, you still need two crosswalks.
Right.
Yeah.
But you don't have, I don't see that, do you have any room on that side either, do you? I mean, it looks like, it doesn't look like you have a lot of space between the edge of the pavement and the right end.
There's a bunch of mature trees along that side.
There's, there's not a lot of room and the grays are, they're certainly not flat. I think it goes up and down.
And there are a couple of very large trees.
That's correct.
Okay, well.
So some of this is not ready for primetime, we fully admit that, but we'll continue to work on it, work on these issues and.
So do you want a two-week continuance or a month continuance?
At least a month.
Okay, so why don't we say the seventeenth at eight?
Well, you guys want to come back? I mean, on the, on the seventeenth of December, are you going to be ready with anything?
I don't know if we'll be a whole lot farther along, honestly.
Is this a hearing? This is, this is a meeting.
We're still going to the town to hear? Town meeting on this December first.
We're going to town meeting on this?
Well, we, we didn't.
Acquiring some progress.
Just on acquiring progress.
We didn't have, we didn't give authority to the selectmen to get easements for this project, so there's an article for that.
Oh, okay, well.
So we can continue it to January seventh?
It's not about money. The money's already in place from the CPA.
All right.
Sorry?
Continue to January seventh?
I think that's more realistic. I just honestly, I don't see us getting these things nailed down anytime soon, particularly if we can't have them be able to talk to this.
I think that's the key is to really.
I mean, if you, if the, the December seventh rolls around and you say, gee, we still don't have any easements.
Well, the easements are going to have, is that what you're going, do a town meeting? Is that the town's?
It'll just, it'll, all it'll do is authorize the selectmen to acquire easements for this project. It doesn't mean we have easements on that day, it just means they have the ability to do that.
Yeah.
And I don't know what, we haven't taken their temperature as to whether they'll want to do an eminent domain taking for this to make it happen or.